I call to order this joint meeting of Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls, and the Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone tonight, please make sure your cellphones are turned off. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter, and then each of the planning commissions will vote independently to derive at a decision. Any final action taken on conditional use permit requests will take effect five working days following this meeting, unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Monday, May 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint meeting on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017 at 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. When the joint agenda is completed, the city planning commission will adjourn, and the meeting will continue as the county planning commission considers items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes of the March 27th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the planning commission members on any item listed on the consent agenda?
City side.
Seeing none. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commissions later in the meeting. Okay, item one is approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Item two is conditional use permit 17-19 to allow six fowl. And this is Josh Pear is located at 6610 East Split Rock Circle.
Regular agenda.
Well, I'm sorry, that's regular. We only have the minutes. I apologize. Okay, so, minutes are approved. Motion first.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a minute. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion approved for the consent agenda on the city side. Discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried on the city side.
Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda. Item two. David, you are Heinel is presenting this one.
Good evening, Commission. David Heinel, Planning Department. This conditional use permit 17-19 is a request for, to allow the keeping of six fowl on the property. It's located right here at the corner of Overland Pass and Split Rock Circle, so just northeast of that outlined in red on the image. The, the application describes keeping of six hen chickens, which is what is allowed. If you go forward to the site plan, the image, you can see the, the area right next to the... So the area right here is where the proposed coop structure will be is, is there now? There's no chickens on site right now. As you can see, this is just located about 20 feet from this lot line right here. There's an existing tree belt that, I've got some pictures that I took when I went out to the site. This is the, the, the structure. As you can see, there's nothing, nothing in the area, nothing inside the pen structure. Here's the trees right here. And then to the right of this image is the, the neighboring property, the closest property line, which is about 20 feet away from that structure. And then as you can see, this is a existing wooded area that runs on the north side of the subject property, which is another about considerable distance, so it's probably about 100 feet away from that. And on the other side of this house, to the, to the left of this image is another house. It's another 50 feet away from that, which the closest structure on the property, not including the petitioner's own house, is 200 feet away. And that includes the house to the left of this image and to the, to the right of the image as well, or next to, the next door property owner. This is looking, looking south on what is called Overland Pass towards the, the property that the subject property kind of goes around, as you can see in the image, the inset image right here, looking towards this property up the road. And this is looking north tor, or north on Overland Pass towards the rest of the subdivision. As you can see, the closest house off to the right in the near, near image, this is where that shelter belt would be that cuts through, it cuts on the north side of the property. And this is looking west of the property, so looking, getting the full picture, and the how, or the other houses in, in the vicinity. Drawing that same, a little over 200 feet. This one's a little bit further away. This is just a closer up picture of the, the coop of that, from that, the eastern, or that westernmost property boundary, close to Overland Pass Road. And then just showing again that shelter belt there. And this is just a zoomed out, this is looking right along that property line of where the, the property goes, the subject property goes around the property just to the west, the closest property line to the, the coop structure. Some of the, some of the concerns that were presented, including, I took a picture of the, the notification sign. One of the concerns brought forth to the planning department was that the sign was not posted on the property, which is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. And as you can see, the, the sign is posted on the property, so included this picture in, and this was taken exactly one week before, which is the, the requirement. So this item, so the zoning ordinance right now allows the keeping of six fowl by conditional use permit, hence the reason for the public hearing. So just going into some of the things that staff observed and has heard throughout the, the time period that since the, the initial application and going through, just, just kind of the general nature of the phone calls that, and emails that staff has received are basic, including but not limited to, maintenance of the property, upkeep of just the proposed land use for the keeping of fowl, and the proximity to adjacent residences. The, this entire subdivision includes about 200 homes, if you can count the entire, the entire subdivision that's bounded by the city limits, which is surrounded, the subdivision is surrounded by the city limits on all sides. On, on April 12th, county planning staff went out and took picture, or, and took the, the pictures of the, the site itself, and, and one of the, the immediate things on, once you first get out of the vehicle, you can hear the sounds of chirping birds and barking dogs, among other things, which are similar to the partic, the proposed land use, but have a, a more of a domesticated aspect to it where the keeping of fowl, you're, you're not as likely to, to keep them inside, but having them in another structure. The site conditions with the amount of open space that exists on site and the, just the natural features tend well to, to, to the keeping of fowl and give more open space to allow the use and blending, rather than having less than one acre lots, you have averaging two acre lots on, in this vicinity, in the immediate vicinity. Like I said, the most of the other concerns, the general concerns about noise and smell, about the particular use, which I've attached. The, the applicant provided some, provided some pictures about a couple hours ago of just some of the concerns that were presented about chickens getting out on the property, which is another one of the photos that were submitted by a, a property owner in the neighborhood, about chickens getting loose after hours and, and running amok and, and going on to neighboring properties. So there's pictures of locks and there's other things that were presented, and the applicant can clarify on a lot of that. Just some of the criteria that is included with the zoning ordinance, just quickly running through this. The impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties shall be a major consideration. The proposed use shall be generally compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. The, so, the entire neighborhood consists of lots that are averaging two acres, which allows landowners to enjoy the, enjoy the, the company of certain domesticated animals, such as, such as dogs, cats, and the like, and other common household pets. Other, other one includes, which things fall within the definition of fowl, which the ordinance states for with, with the conditional use. A lot of these properties do not have fences in the area, so it's, it's wide open. There's open space, which, which could present a, a particular problem with keeping the fowl on site, especially during the daylight hours. Two, measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. The, the proposed use keeping of fowl for personal use should not significantly affect the general character of the area with only a limited number, six animals allowed per property in the subdivision, which has over 200 homes. The, so there should be, the proper management and care of, in keeping of fowl should be set in place by the petitioner to, to mitigate the concerns that are presented over things like smell and noise concerns, which would be detectable to landowners in the immediate vicinity of the proposed use. But any, any of those issues would be addressed according to the animal control ordinance, which is a contract with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society that the county has, and, as well as the public nuisance ordinance. For certain things like, if there's any manure or grass clippings or anything like that that would need to be addressed, or burning of excrement or something like that. Three, the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air and water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through use of screening, setbacks in the orientation. The proposed use should take into consideration the rights of individual landowners to enjoy their properties in coordination with the zoning ordinance through minimum setbacks of all fowl containment structures. The differences in size and shapes of the lots, because you have different configurations of how this subdivision was plotted early in, or 40, 50 years ago, which would present, present opportunities to help manage the negative effects through increased setbacks for coop structures, and coop structures, the property lines, and individual homes. Inadequate maintenance with, in general upkeep of the subject property where the fowl are to be kept would present a particular concern if they weren't addressed by the, the animal control ordinance and public nuisance ordinance, which could cause a significant impact. Four, the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. The keeping of fowl is, is, is a more common use than, in a rural residential subdivision than is likely to be seen in, say, the city of Sioux Falls or where you have more open space. You have lots that are larger than one acre. While the presence of fowl in a residential setting will present odor and noise concerns, but it should not significantly affect the general public beyond the permitted personal uses, such as sports and leisure and other issue, or with domesticated animals in the rural residential district. The, the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan identifies the area firmly within the transition area for the city of Sioux Falls, which has a primary purpose of maintaining the rural landscape until eventual development of residential and/or municipal development occurs. The subject property lies in an existing rural residential subdivision, which was developed for over, for over 200 one acre lots. Goal two, action 2.1 on page 105 of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan recommends that the county follow the goals and policies for land use, economic development, rural conservation, parks and open space, natural resources and transportation. And in highlighting the future land use plan section, goal two aims to coordinate growth and land use planning among the county, townships, cities, and other relative organizations. The result of this coordination and cooperation between counties, cities, and townships for planning and implementing strategies and land use procedures. The shapes of Sioux Falls 2045 comprehensive plan identifies this area as a planned urbanized area, which infrastructure is available to this land area, and it can be annexed. And which lends along with coordinating growth and land use patterns for the, any proposed land uses that would occur, that would be, should be approved. So staff finds that the proposed use, keeping fowl is generally compatible with permitted uses on surrounding properties and conforms to the goals and policies of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan for maintaining the rural landscape until eventual municipal development. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 17-19 with the following conditions. One, the conditional use permit 17-19 allows the keeping of six fowl. Two, that fowl may be kept for domestic, non-commercial use. Three, that poultry or fowl must be kept in a secure coop, pen, or enclosure from dusk until dawn. Four, that any pen, run, cage, hutch, enclosure, coop serving to house or confined fowl shall maintain a distance of 20 feet from the property line and 50 feet from any adjacent residences. And it would entertain any questions if you had them.
I have a quick question or clarification. First one is, okay, this says basically, so there's no roosters if you have chickens, correct? Just like the Sioux Falls type ordinance has. But on the applicant's, application, he wrote six hen chickens slash ducks slash peacocks. We do not want peacocks in this type of a situation. They're the loudest, nastiest bird there is.
So in, in conversation with the applicant, and the applicant can clarify on this and further, is that the, and that's why the staff report was written to reflect six hen, to allow six hen chickens is the request, so it was changed.
That is it. Six hen chickens.
Six hen chickens.
Whether peacocks or any of that. Okay. Okay, any questions?
I have a question. Is it, it's apparent that it takes a conditional use permit to keep fowl in the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the information you provided has showed that the applicant kept fowl at their location previously. Did they have a conditional use permit at that time?
They did not have a conditional use permit, and once this, so, there was fowl on the property three, about three years ago, a little over that. Staff went out, or county planning staff went out on code enforcement to enforce the public nuisance and animal control ordinance, and, which fowl is not allowed, was not allowed at that time. And since then, the chickens were removed. And then, so code enforcement, it was abated. The use was abated. They didn't have any more fowl on the property. And in the pictures, there is none.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we go, have the petitioner come forward next to them? Any questions?
I think there's some bits of clarification, because they talk about the roosters being in a pan or a cage from dusk till dawn. They never leave that structure. And to address your question, previously what happened was is that the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance for the city of Sioux Falls allowed the keeping of it. And the Argus article didn't explain that. They were gifts that were given to my children at that time. And so we kept them, okay? We didn't, we, we assumed that you could just keep them like the city of Sioux Falls has, because that's more urban than rural. And zoning and planning came out, I don't believe it was for actual the chicken complaint, because they were there three months without a complaint from any of my neighbors. They came out for a grass clippings complaint, and they discovered the chickens. After speaking with them, yes, we wanted to comply. We removed them. And then we worked on a process to get the law changed for all of Minnehaha County to conform more with Sioux Falls. It, the conditional use requirement remained for Minnehaha County versus Sioux Falls. That's the only thing that's different between the two. But we actually worked through the process to get that changed for everyone.
Okay. Any questions of the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for coming in. So recognizing that your neighbors say that there's a covenant against having chickens in your area, what do you think about that aspect?
I've never seen these documents, and I don't know exactly what they're talking about. If they reference the documents that get left at my house that are not addressed from anybody, that also says you can't have fences. I included to the zoning and planning the, the numerous properties that do have fences, that do have outbuilding structures, that have dog runs in the front of their houses, that, you know, their doors open up right to the street where you can see their dogs in and out, and the pictures of multiple dogs screaming and barking constantly at the front of their houses. Hen chickens, and I apologize that the application said peacocks. I was just simply copying the code that they had out there. And then I said, well, we just want six hen chickens, because they, they shouldn't make noise, and they have minimal waste, and we plan to use that for composting, so.
Any other questions of the petitioner?
Three years ago, how many did you have out there then again?
Four.
Four, and were they all hens? Do you have rooster or?
There was one rooster, because they're unsexed eggs, and these were gifts. We didn't purposely buy these. And then, over time, we probably had more than what it appeared, because some would die. So, and they didn't all make it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Would remind you, we do not enforce covenants within the building.
I know that.
The audience probably does not.
No.
We do not enforce, the county does not enforce that. That's up to the building associations or the housing associations to enforce those. Anyone else in the audience care to address this? We've had several letters that we've read through. Come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nancy Thompson. I live at 6600 East Split Rock, which is to the west of Mr. Pear. And the pictures of the chickens on the land was mine. And they were there all the time.
Is this currently?
No, this was three years ago.
Okay, we're talking three years ago, okay.
Yes, and I think the coyotes got a lot of them, because there were big bursts of feathers on the lot.
It works that way.
And there's a coyote that hangs out in my yard. And what I'm afraid of is those chickens are going to be baited. And they're going to keep the coyote hanging around the yard. And there are small dogs, of which some of them bark a lot. We object. And we know you can't, the county does not enforce the covenants, but there's a lot of neighbors here that aren't attending another meeting that would like to enforce the covenant by objecting.
Okay.
And it's, that they have to be in from dusk to dawn. Where are they the rest of the day? There's no fence, so they're either in this little teeny tiny coop, or they're in my yard, because they like my garden. So, I object.
Thank you. We'll have the objection. Well, you'll be able to rebut it, yeah, okay. Anyone else care to address this? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Susan Johnson. I'm at 6801 East Split Rock Circle. I'm opposed to it basically because covenants were in place at the time the petitioner purchased this property that states no livestock or poultry of any kind shall be raised, bred, or kept on the lot. Due to this, granting the permit will likely result in unnecessary litigation. Legal action can be avoided by adhering to the current covenants. Known predators such as coyotes, skunks, and raccoons already exist in the area. Chickens provide a readily available food source for them, and that could potentially be hazardous to humans and small pets. The county staff recommendations indicate the fowl must be secured from dusk until dawn. Free-ranging chickens can and most likely would be a nuisance to neighboring properties. They can easily destroy a newly planted vegetable garden, uproot perennials, pick blossoms off annuals as well in scratch, and peck bare spots to the soil. The staff recommendations do not address the issue of coop, pen, or enclosure upkeep or cleanliness with no guarantee of maintenance. Problems with odor and parasites could result. Due to these, I request the denial of the permit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Anyone else care to address this? Come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Josie Alpers from 6609 East Split Rock Circle. And I strongly object to having additional chickens in the neighborhood. The last time Mr. Pear had fowl on his property, it included a, besides the hen, the multiple hens, and I don't even know what all he had there. It was more than chickens. He also had a rooster that would crow at 5:00 AM. All the neighbors had to deal with this every day. He is an individual who has not paid attention to the rules. Even his ordinance that you took a picture of didn't, was not displayed in such a fashion that it could even be read from the road. There have been many issues with noise violations, including, for example, mowing after 10 o'clock at night. Things like having a dog barking continuously for over 10 hours straight. And a lot of times, the neighbors have not called, because there's certain concerns about calling police in because of noise issues. So I strongly object to this, because it's the one person who's proven that he did not maintain or take care of his property, or care about the neighbors and the ordinances. So I want to make sure that people understand this is not a first-time thing. This is not an only thing. This is not an only issue. There have been many issues with noise and difficulties. So I just want to make sure people understand that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything new to add?
My name is Sonia Hoffman. I live on 1209 South Overland Pass. What I would like to add to everything is that what I don't understand right now is that we're talking about fowl. That's what you're going to decide about, if you can keep fowl. But then, on the other hand, we're talking about chicken only. So I think if anything can be, needs to be decided, then it needs to be decided directly what is actually going to be allowed. I mean, I'm opposing in general against that, but I thought when I was listening to that today, it was a little bit wishy-washy, what is going to be allowed or not, so.
All right, thank you, Sonia. Okay, anyone else care to object? If not, we'll have the petitioner come back. Any additional comments, sir?
Well, I didn't come with a prepared statement, so I don't know if they're paying attention, but the, the use is not for free-range chickens. They're penned all the time. There's a run. In the picture, it shows the run. It's caged in. They can't get out. The coop is again secured with a lock this time, instead of just somebody being able to open it and having them unsecured. As far as making comments of noise and mowing and all these things, it's very easy to make these claims, especially when you're trying to prove your point in a court of public opinion. Now, there are no reports. All these things just kind of pop up all of a sudden when you do something that's maybe against somebody else's wishes. And as far as keeping them, again, I think we've re, talked about it enough. It's six chickens. It's not anything else.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll close the floor at this time for discussions or action. Discussion or action?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If, if this is approved, can we put the explicit authority in for staff that there's any complaints, they have the authority to revoke the permit or pull the applicant back in here for complaints we can't?
Well, we have, that's already written in the ordinance that if, if we can recall conditional use permit with proper notification to the applicant. We have, and we have done that in the past. If you recall, we've had applicants that haven't met the requirements, and we go through a recall process to begin the revocation. But we would only, we would do that if they are not meeting some specific criteria of the zoning ordinance or some specific conditions that you have adopted.
Thanks. Okay, the floor is closed, ma'am. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Can we ask for call or vote? I believe that's what it's called. Do you have a motion?
I would ask the city, I guess, what the city's attitude is towards this. This area likely will be within the city coming up.
Since the city gerrymandered around this area in order to build an ugly apartment building out at Willow Run, let's see what you think.
If, if this application was within the city, what would you guys be doing?
It wouldn't be an application, would it?
They would just be allowed. Six hens would be allowed with no...
They would just be allowed, six hens would be allowed with no conditional use application.
Confined to a run and kept in a coop.
Yep. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Diane, do they have to be confined to a pen?
Um they have to be confined within the yard.
Yep, okay.
I have a comment.
I just ask that other commissioners not make comments about annexations within the city of Sioux Falls, if that necessary.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, however, that one's obvious.
Uh Mr. Chairman, um perhaps you could consider um some changes to condition number one, because I think the applicant has indicated they want six hens.
Instead of fowl?
Hen chickens, instead of fowl, and we specify that. If you so decide to adopt this, I want it, I'd like to say six hen chickens.
Clarification, that's clarification.
Yeah, clarification.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment on, actually, two. Um first of all, I agree with Diane, but secondly, um with regards to this particular issue, uh it seems that um the city has approached this from the standpoint of an ordinance, whereas you're using a conditional use process on the county's part. I'm going to vote against it, because I don't think there's a compelling reason to support it. Um that might be one. And I also um think that uh it should be taken into consideration what the history has been. And I know, don't know if I know for sure, but um I don't think the city adopted its chicken ordinance three years ago. Is that true, Diane?
It's been in the shapes and balls ordinance, so it was adopted back in twenty fourteen.
I stand corrected. That's that's my comments.
What's that, Commissioner?
To your meeting, I would.
Okay, why don't we, you guys, why don't you act first, and we'll probably act accordingly? Because like I say, when it comes to these deals, when it's this close in the city, we kind of we'll act first, okay, I need a motion then, guys, people?
Mr. Chair, I I would like a couple of conditions tweaked with a motion to approve. First, that it is strictly prohibited to six hen chickens. Uh number three, that they must never leave the enclosure. And I I think if if we were to make those two changes, I would make a motion to approve those changes.
Okay, that was the motion on the county side, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
City side. And exactly the same as that one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna support it, I I think it fits with what the city ordinance already is, and the personal property rights of somebody who wants to keep chickens, I think is something he can do. And if neighbors don't like him, doesn't mean he's a bad person.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second for approval for conditional use permit number seventeen nineteen with the stipulations as noted by the county, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All the same sign?
Yes.
That's three to one. Motion passes on the city side.
Okay, that concludes the city-county portion, then we'll move on to two more meetings, yeah.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And and you should, if they're out.